Good evening and welcome to the Isco West City Council Committee Work Session for Monday, July 8. Councilmember Walsh is excused this evening. We're going to start with Agenda Bill 7759, our 2020 to 2025 Capital Improvement Plan, including Transportation Improvement Program. And I will remind the public that we will take public comment before moving to deliberation on this bill. With that, I'm going to hand things over to Beth Goldberg, our Finance Director.
Good evening. Thank you all. We're here again to talk about the CIP. And a lot of this is going to be an overview of past discussions, just to remind everyone of where we ended up, primarily at the June 24 council meeting. So as a reminder, at the June 24 council meeting, or work session, I should say, we walked through a series of policy considerations and council did give us some initial feedback. And so I'm going to walk through all of that and remind council where we landed on June 24. And then there will be opportunity for questions and discussion at the end of my presentation. As a reminder, and we've said this at other presentations, the CIP is a planning document. It does not represent final funding decisions on any of the projects. There will be future opportunities to make those decisions, but this does lay out a framework and a roadmap for us to consider as our work moves forward. So the first policy consideration that we presented on June 24 was whether council wished to reflect the TBD sales tax revenues in the CIP. And if so, if council preferred what we were calling TBD Option 1 or TBD Option 2. Under TBD Option 2, work on Southeast 43rd would be accelerated. And the biggest change to this would be not only the acceleration of the work, but the fact that this project would then be funded with existing general fund debt service capacity rather than the TBD sales tax. On June 24, council did indicate its preference to include the TBD sales tax assumptions in the CIP and indicated its preference to accelerate work on Southeast 43rd using existing debt service capacity as the funding mechanism. And I'm going to follow up on that with a little bit more detail in a moment. But before I do that, I did want to show you, and we indicated this a little bit indirectly on June 24, the projects that would be impacted by this change. So first of all, Southeast 43rd in particular, work would be accelerated to 2020 rather than 2021. And in doing this, because it's prior to the sales tax being approved, the sales tax revenue coming in, we would recommend that it be funded with existing general fund debt service capacity. So that's the change there. And then we needed to free up existing debt service capacity to accommodate this change. And we did so by showing four projects here as unfunded in the out years, the Valley Trail and Creek acquisitions, Hillside acquisition, and the Three Trails Crossing. All of those would be unfunded under this scenario in 2020 through 2025, although funded in those initial years, 2020 and 2021. And then the amount of general fund-supported debt that would go towards the new fire station would be reduced in 2022. So the amount that would be unfunded would increase. Now, I will, on June 24, council did pose a question to staff about whether, if a decision were made to accelerate work on Southeast 43rd and the sales tax were later put on the ballot and the sales tax were approved, could that sales tax revenue be used to pay for the debt service on that project? So staff did consult with our bond advisors and bond council to find out whether this type of arrangement would be possible. And while not typical, bond council did, does not see any initial legal impediments that would preclude us from pursuing this strategy, provided that, and there are a couple of provisions, the first of which would be that council would approve the ballot language for the bond, or the ballot measure before the bonds are sold for this project. So we would need to sell the bonds for this project either late this year or early 2020 in order to keep it on schedule. So council would need to approve the ballot language that would put this on the ballot prior to that. The other stipulation, and the ballot language would need to specify that the sales tax, if approved, would go for paying the debt service on this project, along with the other projects that we have been discussing, the six other projects. So that would need to happen this fall. In addition, the bond ordinance, with each bond sale, council needs to approve a bond ordinance approving the sale of the bonds. The bond ordinance would similarly, in addition to pledging the full faith and credit of the general fund, as would be the case with typical LTGO debt, the bond ordinance would also need to say that if approved, the sales tax, the TBD sales tax would go to paying the debt. So those are the stipulations of what would be required.
Sorry, Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you. Maybe you don't know the answer to this question. Would the language need to say would, or could it say may? Would it be flexible?
I think that it could be subject to discussion. You need to name the projects that are being paid, that would be designated. But for example, and we could explore this with bond council before we make, you know, give you a definitive answer, you know, there would be language that said, and we've talked about this before, if there were excess revenues, they could be used for transportation O&M kinds of things. That would be could language. I don't know if the could, would, would matter on the Southeast 43rd, but that's something we could explore.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Winterstein?
Thank you, Beth. It was unclear to me about the timing. You said that we would have to settle upon language, but was that prior to starting any part of this project at all, even if we were going to finance it out of existing cash flow?
If, let me try and answer it this way.
Let me phrase it actually a little differently. So I think what this question envisions is that we could kick off a project uncertain whether or not we're ever going to use any debt to pay for it. We'd say, hey, we got the, we're going to use the general fund to pay for this whole thing. But then I think this question envisions the possibility, actually, I do want to start, you know, if that is successful, then I do want to start. I do want to use some of those bond money, perhaps so that I have freed up some of my general funds for other purposes. But do I, am I, is that what it envisions, the question?
So I think the question, and I don't want to speak for your colleagues, but what I understood your colleagues asking on the 24th was if there was a decision to accelerate Providence Point, start it, basically, we would go out to bid this fall, do most of the work in 2020, it would be before the sales tax revenue came in or would be on the ballot. So the initial thinking, because we don't know if the revenue is going to be there, is you would have to pledge general fund debt capacity to paying for it. So the question we received on the 24th is, okay, could you commit to that general fund debt and give ourselves the flexibility that if then the sales tax later passes, could the sales tax then be used to pay for the debt rather than the general fund? So what bond council is saying to us is that that's not necessarily a typical approach, but if we were to pursue it, we would need, in order to provide some certainty and some confidence to the people that would buy the bonds, that would finance this on our behalf, is we would definitely need to commit, commit the general fund capacity regardless, because that's the backup, and then have language in the bond ordinance that says, and use sales tax, the TBD sales tax revenue if it passes. But what bond council is telling us is that the bondholders are going to want to see that there is a commitment from the council to put this on the ballot and not wait, for example, for future councils to make that decision. So they're going to want that confidence there.
Okay, I think, I think you answered my question, that it envisions us potentially starting a project not dependent upon any funding that is paid for with TBD revenues, at least the debt service portion of that. But then with the opportunity to start using bond money, and then the investors would have to know that upfront, that that would be our intent. That's why you'd have to do the language, I think you said, or somebody would, for the ballot language. You're furrowing your brow.
Well, I guess maybe, I'm furrowing my brow only. I'm sorry. Need to work on my poker face. We would need, we would be, we would be issuing bonds regardless. The question is, what are we pledging as the revenue source to pay the bonds? So under option, our original option?
I think I understand.
Under the original option, there would be a bond ordinance that would say, we are pledging TBD sales tax revenues to pay the debt. Under Option 2, where it's accelerated, we don't know if the sales tax revenues are going to be available, we would pledge the general fund and give ourselves the option to use the sales tax should the sales tax pass.
For that one project?
For that one project.
And the idea, from a policy perspective, I wasn't here, so the idea was that we would free up cash flow for other purposes?
At such time, if, yes. So the challenge, or the trade-off, I should say, the trade-off with accelerating work on Southeast 43rd is that we don't yet know if we're going to have the sales tax revenue. So we would have to use the general fund. The CIP, as originally proposed, had allocated those general fund dollars to other projects. So if council, the council direction to accelerate it is displacing some of the projects that I mentioned on the earlier slide. So approaching it in this way allows us to start work earlier, and then if the sales tax passes, freeze up that capacity that had previously been obligated to this project to then use for other projects.
Thank you. Council Deputy President, Patisse.
Thanks for the presentation and the information. I was particularly interested in this question, and we talked a little bit about this. Oh. I'm not on. Thank you for the presentation. We talked a little bit about this before. This was something I was particularly interested in, and we were talking about this a little bit as a hybrid, I guess that that was a little bit of the word that we were, that we were using. And you had talked about this not being typical. Are there other examples or cities that have, that have gone about putting bonds forward in this way?
Not that I'm aware of, and not that bond council was. I mean, I didn't ask it quite that specifically of have other people do it, done this, but she was, yeah. She noted, and I do want to go through some pros and cons, but did note that this is unusual and not, not a typical way of approaching it. Now, she says it's legal, but it's not typical. So maybe can I go through some of the pros and cons? So, you know, the biggest advantage of this strategy, this hybrid strategy, as you mentioned, is that it does have the potential, should the sales tax pass, to give us some more flexibility on the general fund side to invest in some of these, these other projects that we have been talking about. So that is, that is a strong advantage of this. It allows the council to accelerate work on the project, as we have discussed. But there are some challenges with it. The first of which is thinking about the ballot measure itself is, from a messaging perspective, it's unusual, and it may be difficult to explain how additional revenue is needed for a project that is already underway. So that might, that may present some messaging challenges on the ballot itself. The other challenge that we see is, it's a timing question, which is having this ballot language finalized this fall would mean that we would be talking about this to the council at the same time that the council is deliberating on the operating budget. It's a busy time. This would, this would carve out some additional time. So there's just some logistical issues. It's not that it can't be done, but there's a capacity issue about how quickly this could be done for the fall. That's more of a logistical question. I would say the more fundamental question is, does this present messaging challenges when presenting this package to the voters?
Did you have a follow-up?
No.
So I have a question then. Thinking about this in terms of, you're driving down the road, and there's a fork in the road. So there's Option 1, which is waiting to do that work as, later, and not out of general fund. There's what I'll call Option 2A, which is get working on this as soon as possible and take it out of general fund. There's Option 2B, which hopefully has the exact same timing, which is get working on this as soon as we can, get there the soonest with the mostest, which I think is, I don't remember which general said that, but it was, I think it was Sherman, it was either Sherman or Grant. Anyhow, so there's 2A and 2B. And my question is, there's clearly a fork in the road. We have to choose 1 or 2 soon, whether we're going to go down Path 1. The fork between 2A and 2B, when does that occur?
That's a good question. I mean, I would say fairly quickly, because if we need to start working on that, you know, getting that ballot language going for 2B, I'm assuming 2B is the hybrid. 2A is just general fund.
2A is what you just showed a minute ago.
Yes, and this is 2B.
Right.
Okay, now we've got that clear. We haven't named them yet, so this is now officially 2B. Yeah, this is officially 2B. So, yeah, I would say that we need to make that fork fairly quickly, because there's going to be work for finance to do with bond council to start getting that package ready for council consideration. So I can't give you a precise date of, you know.
But is it like a week from now, or a month from now, or two months from now? Is it a little ways down the road, or is it essentially, we're making it at the same time? And if so, what's the mechanism for that fork? Because that's what I'm still a little hazy on. City Administrator Moon?
Sure. I think we're hoping to get that feedback from you as we adopt the CIP. So it's now, it's July 15. And if there's a desire to choose one of the two paths, 2A or 2B, then I think what we've heard from our bond council is, in particular, if you're planning to provide the opportunity of 2B utilization of future sales tax revenue, then we would need to incorporate that into the ballot measure. And if you want to do the work sooner rather than later on Southeast 43rd, we were intending to kick off with that this fall in order to do construction in 2020. And therefore, we would need to provide some certainty, not only to the funders of that project through our existing debt service bond sale, but also as it relates to the ballot measure. And so those would all have to come together, we're saying, this fall. Bond council is saying you need to have similar language in what you transmit to the bond purchasers and your voting public in order to be clear about potential use of those revenues or potential ways that the projects, that this project would be financed. So we are saying, if you want to do the project sooner rather than later, we should establish what that bond ordinance language and the ballot measure look like this fall.
Okay, so, and if we chose Option 2B, and by the way, I, boy, was I off. It was Nathan Bedford Forrest, so man, oh, man, was it not Grant or Sherman. But, because I want to get there soonest with the mostest. If we chose B and said, okay, our intent would be to have it come out of a bond, bonds are not guaranteed to pass. What would happen if we chose 2B and then a bond did not pass?
It would be.
So the other decision point that would come into play, if you had decided 2B and we set the bond ordinance and the ballot language to be identical and provide for that opportunity, but then the opportunity was not available to us, subsequent to that, we would communicate that as the outcome from the election, and we would continue to finance it through existing general fund revenue, and you would see that continue to be replicated in your annual budget.
So we would find ourselves on the 2A path after having attempted to go down the 2B path?
That's correct.
Thank you. Several. Councilmember Goodman?
Member Hunt was next.
Well, you hadn't asked a question yet, so I was kind of, but, Councilmember Hunt?
I was actually first. I have the first.
So what does the mechanism look like in terms of deciding both the voting language and the language that will go to the bond?
So you can, you can jump in as well. I think what we would anticipate doing is what we have done with previous ballot measures. We would take your direction as to what you want to reflect in the adopted CIP. If that was to pursue 2B, then we would, or 2A, we would then have to produce the bond ordinance for your approval. In that bond ordinance, we would then have to describe which projects we would be debt financing. If you had chosen the 2B path, then we would also be producing draft ballot language for you to approve. Let it answer your question.
So it would be a separate, would be a separate A-B, or I'm wondering about the actual mechanism?
It would be two.
Sure, so, yes, separate agenda bills, and you would take action on them independent of each other, or one first and then the next. And, and we would anticipate having a work session, if need be, in advance of drafting those documents so that we could be certain of council's intent, in particular for the ballot measure language. And that's, that's our typical pattern. And then we would come back at a regular business session and give you that draft ordinance for public hearing consideration, I believe, and final adoption by council.
Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you. So Beth, you also mentioned that the language in the TBD ballot measure could, probably would say that if the revenues were more than expected, that we could use the, those revenues to pay for other projects. Or that, would we have to be specific with that language?
So the projects, the projects intended to be funded, so we've been talking about seven, although, six or seven, those would be listed as specific projects. And then there would be language that says, any revenues in excess of the amount required to pay the debt service on those six or seven projects could then, could then be used for transportation O&M or other transportation capital investments. The difference, because we explored this with bond council, of could you put Southeast 43rd in that other could-be category? And she did not feel that we could do that, because it was a project that would have been started beforehand, and there was an intent, and the TBD language explicitly says you have to list intended projects. So the idea, the idea, as I understand it, is that the council is not contemplating excess revenues. Council would be contemplating the revenues for this. And because it is the revenues, then it would need to be listed, because the TBD-enabling legislation specifically says that you must list the specific projects that would be funded.
Okay, so it wouldn't be, bond council didn't feel that the language would be flexible, could be flexible enough to include Southeast 43rd if we started that sooner?
In that, so the ballot language would need to say the intended projects.
Okay.
And then the, this, this more catch-all, looser language would be for the excess revenue. The difference with Southeast 43rd is that it's not being contemplated for excess revenue. It would be contemplated for the revenue, which is why it would need to be listed.
Okay, I'm not sure, maybe I can ask it. I think, not sure why it couldn't be listed as a potential for excess revenue, not, just for excess revenue.
City Administrator Moon?
Thank you. I think the main issue for bond council is that we would have already commenced the project and have not articulated a potential funding source for that project to the investors in that project.
It would, so it would need to be in the bond, the bond ordinance would need to say it, that, that the bond ordinance that would.
I understand all that, so why would we need to list, and maybe this is a technical question for bond council, and that's fine, why would we need to list Southeast 43rd for potential excess revenue, if there was any? But is it just because it had been started already?
No, we wouldn't, we weren't, we weren't talking to bond, and we spend a lot of time talking to bond council and playing out these different scenarios. So this, we were pushing all sorts of different angles. It is, because it's not being contemplated for excess revenues, and you already would have had a bond ordinance that says that we are.
Oh, we already would have issued a bond.
We would have already issued the bonds, and so the investors need the reassurance. Now, I'll also say, she said, you know, you could try it, but she's not confident in how it would stand up legally. So my sense is, we didn't necessarily want to be precedent-setting with this. So that, and we tried all sorts of different angles.
Okay, that, that helps. Thank you.
Councilmember Ray, who I am confident has not asked a question yet.
No, I think I just started this thing a couple weeks ago. So I think you just answered this, but it's really the question about this ordinance on initiative language is really to give our bond buyers, the bondholders, the assurance that they will know what funding stream will be paying for this bond. So we have to be very specific and deliberate about, we are going to, when we release this bond, have this language that says, this is going to be general fund, but we're, we've got this language for this sales tax initiative, and we're going to use that. So they know that I got this source, but I might have this source. So it's full disclosure to them. So when do we need to have the bonds issued so that we can get the 43rd Street project done next year, essentially?
Yeah, so the schedule, that, the accelerated schedule would have us going out for bid this fall. I believe it's $200,000, $300,000 would be needed this fall. And then the bulk of the cost, the $7 million-ish, would be needed in 2020. And I'm assuming we would need access to those funds, you know, early in 2020, so we would need to talk to our bond advisor of, you know, do we issue those bonds at the end of 2019 or the beginning of 2020? In some respects, that's kind of the same timing in terms of, you know, when council would need to approve, so.
So then, kind of backing up from there, so we need to have the language for the initiative to increase the sales tax drafted before, say, let's say, mid-December?
Probably before that.
First of December?
I would say probably November. And some of this is going to be on Sheldon of when he would need to start the bidding process. But I would say no later than when council adopted the budget, potentially earlier, and we can come back to you with what that schedule is.
I'm just trying to back into where President Marx was going earlier, which is, what's our drop dead date for putting together this language? And it sounds to me like we're, you know, October timeframe, the latest we could put together the language for the tax. together the language for the tax increase initiative so that we could then roll that into the bond issue, respectus, I guess, and then get the bond floated, get the revenue in and so we can get the road, or the signal built. Okay, great. Thank you.
Council Deputy President Batiste.
So, I just wanted to ask one more time, and I know you've already answered this question, so I'm just making sure that I'm wrapping my head around this correctly, that with, when we're talking about option 2B, we're talking specifically about Southeast 43rd and the work being started, but would that impact other projects that potentially had been started prior to the TBD coming about or being voted on?
So, the TBD projects themselves that we've been talking about? So, we would not be contemplating starting those other TBD projects any earlier? So, they would stay on the original proposed timing, so 2021 and beyond? So, that would be part of a separate bond issuance that would occur at such time that we knew that the TBD sales tax had passed.
So, even if-
But, you know, around the messaging of this strategy, you know, it does, it's unusual. Depending on, you know, voters' ability to support it, it may or may not impact the chances of the TBD measure passing. Obviously, if it didn't pass, we would not be able to pursue those other projects.
So, even if we had done some preliminary design work on Newport or work on Northwest Semamish, the $3 million that was set aside, those, that would not impact what, what we're talking about?
Correct. And the $3 million, the $3 million for Northwest Semamish Road is financed with existing debt service capacity because that is, that's-
That's already-
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes. It's, it's the new money for those new TBD projects that would not move forward if that package did not pass.
I don't see any other questions at the moment.
Okay. So, moving right along to policy consideration number two, this was as a reminder, the question that we posed to council in this area was, does council wish to assume a stay-in-place strategy for city facilities or does council wish to consider a consolidated city hall strategy? And the direction that we got from council on June 24th was an indication of a preference to continue discussions around a consolidated city hall and to include funds as proposed in the CIP for the necessary maintenance of existing facilities while those discussions play out.
Councilmember Ray.
Sorry?
Two questions related to that. First one is, and to include funds as proposed in the CIP for necessary maintenance of existing facilities. And I know we walked around this a bit, but those are funds that even if we marched down the path to a new city hall, we would incur those costs anyway.
Correct.
Okay. And then there's the 4.2, $4.3 million in 2021 for, for the city hall. What is that for? What, what, what are we buying for that? I understand the justification that's there, but I, I'm not clear on what that is for.
That is for some of the preliminary design work that would be needed if the council chose to pursue that strategy. And again, at such time that that expenditure wouldn't occur, and I, I feel like it might be a little bit later than 2021, but council would have an opportunity-
It's 2021.
Is it 2021? Okay. There's a lot of projects to remember. Council would have an opportunity to, to evaluate that expenditure at such time that it took up the 2021 budget.
Great. Thank you.
So-
Sorry, I'm sorry. Councilmember Goodman.
We're just talking about where that 1 million is in here.
Could someone? FC 022.
Thanks.
Page 32 was the answer?
35.
35.
So, policy consideration number three, new fire station. On June 24th, we posed the policy question, does council want to further understand and determine how to relocate Fire Station 71 to support Eastside Fire and Rescue's new service delivery model and level of service commitments? And the council did indicate on the 24th, a preference to hear more about this project, likely in September from EFOR, about this new service delivery model and level of service commitments and what it, what it means for the location of Fire Station 71.
Councilmember Goodman.
Okay. Policy consideration number four, this was, we posed the question of whether council wanted to reserve a portion of the existing debt service capacity in the event of an economic downturn and council did indicate a preference to do this. We talked about, and this was in your packet today, that, that, that preference, it could be stated without necessarily impacting funds down the road. We would simply exercise that if there was a contraction in the economy and we needed to, we needed to use those, those revenues or those, those funds to balance the budget. So, that was policy consideration number four.
Councilmember Hunt.
It seems that that didn't affect anything in the CIP, that decision. I'm wondering what, what is a portion that would be reasonable? What does this look like and how would it affect if we, if you did exercise it? Because right now, it's not making changes.
Yeah. We had talked about $500,000, which is about equivalent, it's equivalent to about $5 million in debt. So, if at such time there was a contraction in the economy, council could decide as part of that annual budget to say, okay, we had had these projects, these CIP projects listed for this particular year, we're not going to proceed with, with $5 million of those. So, there are, there are opportunities throughout the six-year CIP and it would be one we would exercise in the event that, that those revenues were, or those funds were needed to balance the budget.
Council Deputy President Batiste.
Beth, I'm trying to remember back, but did we have a couple of projects designated that would be set aside or is that just something that we would talk about at a later date?
It would be talked about at a later date at such time if we needed, if we needed those funds to balance the budget. So, it could be part of an annual budget discussion. Policy consideration number five. This one, we asked whether the council supported the project lists put forth in the 2020 through 2025 CIP with particular emphasis on the 2020 projects. And council did express general support for the projects proposed in the CIP with a major exception being Southeast 43rd, accelerating that. We've already talked about that. I will also note that based on public feedback we heard at the June 24th work session, the work on Upper Sycamore sewer extension, we've pushed that out into the out years from 2020 to 2024 based on that feedback. So, that, I just want to acknowledge that that is a change that is in the CIP pages that we sent to you as part of your packet. And then the last slide we have tonight is just a reminder of where we are in the process. So, we are nearing the end of this journey. After tonight, we will come back next week where council will hopefully adopt the CIP and the TIP. We talked about that a little bit on June 24th and at that time, council would also need to close the public hearing.
Councilmember Hunt.
So, one of the changes that was made is regarding the out years for acquisitions for Valley Trail and Creekside Sensitive Land acquisitions as well as Hillside acquisitions. I wondered if you could speak to the rationale for moving those from the funded to unfunded category specifically?
Yeah, so, in terms of criteria of, that we had talked about on June 24th of, you know, were they essential to, to existing city business, supporting existing facilities, things of that nature? Those projects fell lower in the priority list. I will also say, and maybe Jeff could help me out here as well, we're not sure that there is going to be land to acquire under some of those acquisitions, so there is, you know, a speculative element about whether land would be, would be available in those years. So, you know, it's a planning number and again, depending on whether council chooses option 2A or 2B, if council picked option 2B and the sales tax passed and we used sales tax to pay the debt service on Southeast 43rd, then that frees up that existing debt service capacity that could allow us to revisit whether those projects are funded in the out years.
So, I think my understanding regarding the acquisitions is not so much that there might not be lands that could be acquired, but rather that we might acquire, there might be strategic opportunities in different years for acquiring.
Yeah, in all, in all of these, for each one of these, these acquisition ones, there it's, it's when do those strategic opportunities present itself? And, you know, again, this is a planning document, so we are making some planning assumptions about when those strategic opportunities would present itself. They may present itself, they may not present itself. There are opportunities to revisit those decisions at such time as those opportunities come about through future budget processes, through future CIPs, things of that nature.
And then the other one that was changed to unfunded status is the three trails crossing. So, does that have a different reason for moving from the funded to unfunded or is that the same apply?
I mean, I, for that one, it's, you know, looking at the, at the criteria that we presented on June 24th of, you know, is, is it considered, you know, essential or there legal requirements, legal obligations? Is it supporting existing facilities? Applying that criteria, that, that project fell, fell as a lower priority of what we were recommending.
Okay.
So, I have a question about, and this is where the fact that I wasn't here two weeks ago was unfortunate, but I recognize that putting things in this plan is not deciding to do them, it is creating the opportunity down the road to, to do them. It's keeping them in the realm of possibility. Nonetheless, we've seen extensive documentation on the financial side of the implications of maintaining our existing facilities versus potential new, you know, the costs that would be associated with doing a new city hall. The conversation that I don't think we've had, and correct me if I'm wrong, is how we might potentially pay for that. And I recognize that we're not applying that same litmus test to all the other stuff that's in this plan, but I think that the, the public has sort of expressed some interest in the fact that we're having this conversation and it, it feels weird because we have a bunch of big-ticket items that we have paid for recently and we are potentially going to be paying for. And this is a topic that we've had extensive conversations on the what would it cost, but not on the how would we pay for it. Is it possible to get that sort of information before next week?
I would say that that's, that that's, that that's a challenge and that's the point of the future discussions around this. Again, this is, you know, this is a, a planning document. There are opportunities with consolidated city hall, with the fire station, which is also not paid for, to have, and frankly, TBD sales tax right now is not paid for until such time as, as the voters approve it, which requires council action to put it on the ballot in advance. So, the, the point being that this is, this is a planning document, it is a roadmap, it is a statement of preferences, but there are opportunities down the road through those separate policy discussions, through the annual budget, because, you know, the funding picture could change, to have follow-up discussions around all of the projects laid out in the CIP. The CIP, what is laid out in the CIP is, is not set in stone. If the revenue picture changes, we might be changing the projects in the CIP. If costs change, we might be changing the projects in the CIP. And then we've got these big policy issues that we have presented to you, that there will be other opportunities outside of the adoption of the CIP to have those discussions.
Okay. Councilmember Hunt.
Thank you.
So, on the city hall timing, I also wondered if you could speak to the differences in timing that will happen depending on if we do the design and build versus the other one, the other option?
Yeah, that, that would all be part of this larger policy discussion that would happen outside of the CIP.
Right, but it will affect the timing within the time scale of the CIP, which is why I'm asking.
Yeah, and, and, and so that, and maybe, I don't know if Jeff wants to come up here and, and take that also, or Emily, but we update the CIP every two years. So, as these policy discussions unfold, they will be incorporated into future CIP. So, the initial years of the CIP, 2020 in particular, there's more certainty about. As you get farther out in the CIP discussions, there is a, a more speculative element of this. They, you know, CIP projects are known to be fluid inherently, so.
Okay. And I'll, I'll just also mention though, the design is in 2021, which is-
Yes. Yeah, and so we would be having those discussions with you through the fall, through next year, and then the 2021 budget process would reflect the decisions that you make and the directions you give us about where you want to head with this.
Okay.
I was just going to add that the projects in the CIP are various points on this timeline continuum, right? Some are just an expression of need, community desire, those sorts of inputs. Others, we have done some conceptual work, we have a better understanding of what we want to incorporate into the design and maybe some preliminary cost estimates. And then others have final engineering and final cost estimates and then others are even further along or right at the stage of implementing construction. And so, this project is, is at the very, very earliest point on that continuum of us saying we believe this is a need, we'd like to have more of a community conversation about what people would like to see in the delivery of their city services. And, you know, so sites aren't known, building amenities aren't known, costs aren't known. What we have presented to date is based off of data experience from other cities and we have presented some potential options for funding mechanisms, but we won't help to facilitate the community conversation and council conversation until you have given us the guidance that you're willing to do that, which sounds like from June 24th you are. And then, as Beth said, we would anticipate coming back to refine each of those variables based on the input that we received from the community and, and based on your feedback. So, I think as we have laid out in the CIP, we expect to be able to gather that kind of information during 2020 such that you can then make whatever changes you need to me, you need to make for the first year in this multiple-year CIP where consolidated city hall has a expenditure.
Councilmember Whitestein.
Well, I'm, I'm still, I'm still interested in the answer to my question though, which is how, how does the timing affect by whether we do design and build or the other one?
Yeah, great question. Just to add, and I think this adds some clarity, at the first meeting, I, I think we made reference to this as well, the CIP as it's listed now would be an example of a design bid-build process where we would do design early on. As Emily mentioned, the exploratory work, the additional public engagement we're going to do, the additional conversations we'll have with you as council before then is going to help determine if we're going to pursue- to help determine if we're going to pursue this project. If we were to pursue a design-build process or a 6320 with a nonprofit partner, if you recall the conversations we had with our consultants, they spell out a couple of other ways we could build this. If we were to pursue one of those options, we wouldn't be doing design early on, right? And so that funding scenario could look different based upon this additional exploratory work that we do.
But I would say we don't know whether that means it's faster or it takes longer because we start later. We don't know the answer to that question yet.
But it also wouldn't start faster than 2021.
No, we don't anticipate having enough information to act any sooner than 2021.
Councilmember Winterstein?
Sure.
Reasonably.
All right, thanks. Earlier, we had a conversation about language for TBD initiative, and it was a good conversation about projects we intended. I noticed in the CIP, the pavement management program, TR 033, does have language that says it is intended to be included as part of the TBD package.
Yes, so that would be part of the component, and we talked about this on the May 13th work session, the strategy with the TBD sales tax of only naming a select number of projects to ensure that we have sufficient revenue to pay the debt service on those, and that the revenue in excess of what would be needed for the debt service on those projects would be allocated to the pavement management program.
Okay, I just, my comment was based on, that explanation from what I heard earlier, that sounds like an intended use to me, and it seems unusual that we say that in our CIP, that it's intended to be included as part of the TBD package. It's not intended to be part of the TBD package, as I understand it, only if there's excess. But it's that stated, it sounds like a stated intention, per your comments earlier about the project, the other project.
Yeah, bond council did not have a concern about that strategy, so...
Even saying it that way in our CIP?
Yeah, because ultimately, it would be the ballot language that would dictate it, and that wouldn't be, there aren't bonds being sold in conjunction with the pavement management program.
Okay, yes, so the language would be, in the ballot, would be most important, understood?
Correct.
It just seems to me the language in the CIP is a little out of sync with that, but thank you for your answer.
We could tweak that.
One final question, just some clarification, in the area of the CIP regarding the REIT, it does, the forecast for, now, I don't expect an answer from you this evening, so hopefully over the course, but I'll just mention it right now before next Monday, just for clarification. The forecast is for revenue to be flat over all six years, 2020 through 2025, and it also, the net balance just of those, the funds of those years, is still very positive, approaching nearly $2 million, just for the use of those funds over those six years. But then in the narrative, it goes on to suggest that we might have a problem. It says something like, "We will need to evaluate the ability to fulfill the REIT expenditure assumptions." It just seems to be a conflict between what's showing in the data, a flat estimate on REIT, showing a net almost $2 million positive, in other words, collecting more than we could obligate, and yet there's some language like, "But we may have an issue, we might, we might need to evaluate the ability to fulfill the REIT expenditure assumptions." That language just seems like in conflict to the numbers that are on the page.
So the numbers on the page, well, maybe before I say that, REIT is an extraordinarily volatile revenue source. It's based on the health of the real estate market, so I cannot predict, I can predict, I think I said this at another meeting, I can predict the forecast will be wrong. I can't predict when they will be wrong and how wrong they will be. So for the purposes of this CIP, we made a decision to take a conservative, to take a revenue estimate for REIT that is based on recent REIT trends, if the real estate market continues to show a level of health that it is shown now, so a total of $3 million. We've seen that roughly over the last couple of years, I think it was a little bit higher last year, but we're seeing it trend down lower this year. So it was intended to be somewhat conservative, but not predicting when there would be a contraction. So that's the reason for the flatness, and it will be wrong at some point. In terms of the reference to, and then why it wasn't all programmed out, is there are specific requirements for REIT projects, and we just didn't have the projects proposed in this CIP, in this round of the CIP, that would use all of those funds. Will other projects be identified in out-years to use those funds? Yes, probably, but nothing that was identified at this point. In terms of the reference to evaluating the fund in particular, I've talked to you before, particularly at the April 1st presentation, on the work we're doing in the finance department, and we're bringing in resources to do evaluation of the health of our funds, because we haven't done the historical reconciliation that we should be doing, REIT is one of those funds. So depending on what that uncovers, we may have some balance issues, and until that work is complete, I can't answer that definitively.
Okay, thank you for the comprehensive question. I don't need a follow-up email or anything.
Councilmember Ray?
So I want to talk a little bit about the funding side of the equation. We've talked a lot about the expenditure side. So I looked at the fund balances from the 2019 budget, and I see the water fund, the sewer fund, the stormwater fund, and those all have dollars in them to fund all of those initiatives. And I see the IT fund, and it looks tight, and I see the school safety fund, and that has dollars in it. And then, as I look at the CIP, I see all sorts of different mitigation, general, police, fire, parks, head bike, and street. And I'm just curious, are those all part of that one fund called mitigation? And are they, is the mitigation fund encumbered, or, I guess I'll use the word encumbered, in some other way, so that I have to use this for parks? And so do we know what the breakdown is by those subcomponents in the fund balances?
Yes and no. Again, this is another fund where we're looking to do that reconciliation, but yes, the various impact fees are intended for the various lines of business for which they were collected.
Okay, so just to make sure I've got that, so something that says mitigation police, there would be dollars that would be in the mitigation fund set aside for police?
Correct.
And that would be discreet from fire and parks?
Correct.
And general, and ped bike. There's a one that's called, in the funding source, called mitigation street. Is that the street capital projects, or is that something different?
It's for street capital projects, but they're capacity building projects.
Okay.
All of the funds in the mitigation fund need to be used for capacity building investments.
Do you have a funding source view of the data? I mean, we've got the categorized, you know, here's our transportation, here's our parks, whatever, and it shows us what the expenditures are? Do we have the flip side of that, which are the other angle on that, which is the funding side of that? So this is coming out of the sewer fund, this is coming out of...
Yeah, we could slice it that way.
I think that would just be interesting to see where we're funding as well as where we're spending.
City Administrator Moon?
I believe we sent that out for, on or around June 24th via email. We'll double-check that, though.
Are there, so I see that in the Creek Corridor part of the acquisition, or, well, in the Creek Corridor project, PK 045, there's REIT as well as mitigation parks. And then the other acquisition are not using REIT or mitigation parks revenue. So I'm wondering, is that a possibility for other, for acquisitions of Creekside and Hillside as well? And if so, why, or why is it only on this PK 045? What's the rationale?
What I could tell you, what project is PK 45?
That's Creek Corridor.
Creek Corridor.
I know the Creek Corridor project was one that was listed as a near-term, of higher prioritized project during the park strategic plan work. And so we wanted to show available revenue for that project. Those other acquisition projects, Valley Trail and Creekside, Hillside acquisitions, are projects that have typically been on our CIP as unfunded or to be funded by new revenue sources, grants, parks bond, for example, for the reasons we stated earlier, they're new assets adding to the inventory. They take time for us to determine, you know, which parcels and how much, and negotiate, and build up enough revenue to actually make those acquisitions. And so we have typically treated those types of projects differently than a project that has more kind of geo-location indicated, and that's what PK 45 has. It has more of a description in the park strategic plan.
Okay, I guess I'm also wondering, with the description of what can be used for mitigation, being capacity, acquisition, though, can...
Correct.
...fit under that criteria?
Correct.
Okay. And also, it could be funded by REIT?
Correct. And as Beth had said, REIT is a fairly finite amount of money each year, and is a more flexible funding tool than the mitigation funds, and so we try to apply it to the projects, to some projects that wouldn't have a different funding source. The big puzzle.
I don't see any other questions. So before we take public comment, I want to ask City Administrator Moon, we are in the midst of a process that had this bill referred to this committee, quote, "for additional review and recommendation." So I'm wondering what you're looking for from us this evening after we take public comment?
Thank you. I think we are asking if you are ready for us to prepare this for July 15th, double-checking that we have made the revisions that you had wanted us to make, particularly during the June 24th meeting, and that you're ready to continue the public hearing, close it on the 15th, and take action on this revised version of the CIP.
All right. With that, I will offer public comment. To folks in the audience, I'll offer, anyone who's interested, up to three minutes. I ask that you just not, if, for instance, there were more than one person here to speak on a particular topic, that subsequent speakers after the first talk about other aspects. And I will do my best to channel Mayor Polly and keep track of the facets that people discuss in their comment. With that, is there any members of the public who wish to speak to us this evening? You'll come to the microphone.
Hi, I'm Daphne Gannon, and I live in Providence Point. And first of all, I would like to thank all the members of the council and staff for all the hard work they have done on the Southeast 43rd intersection over the past five years that I've collaborated with you on this. I thank you very much, and the people in Providence Point, thank you too. However, I am very much aware that this is not cast in stone, and there are things that could happen, and we're not ordering champagne yet, but I did want to thank you. So thank you again, and we hope that someday we'll open the bids and we can order the champagne. And secondly, I would like to say that I will try, again personally, to do all I can to help you when you go out to the public to talk about that TBD or TID. I think it is a reasonable way to fund projects so you don't end up with issues like this. Again, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Is there anyone else, sir, please come to the front?
Hello, my name is Ron Yimhoff. I'm also from Providence Point, and I'm going to add a couple of different things. For one thing, I would really encourage the 2A option, because we know there are a lot of transportation needs in the city, and I would hate for the TBD to suck up the Providence Point issue, and then suddenly, there's other transportation things that need to be done. I've been trying to figure out level of service, transportation level of service, parks level of service, Eastside Fire level of service, city hall level of service, and they all, some of them I can't quite find, some of them seem to have relatively minor impact definitions. But as I look at it, a transportation level of service, like an Eastside Fire level of service, saves and protects lives. And so our emphasis really should be on those over a parks level of service, although that's very important, city hall level of service, that's very important. But that's almost a convenience level of service as opposed to a actual safety level of service. So I would just encourage that we finish Southeast 43rd, that we get the work done this year that's necessary to get the bids, and we complete it next year. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else wishing to address council this evening? Is there anyone else wishing to address council for the second time? Is there anyone else, third, and closing? Thank you for your comments. We had one comment in support of building a stoplight at Southeast 43rd, another comment supporting the 2A option for Southeast 43rd, and more generally focusing on transportation level of service. With that, I will open it to discussion amongst the council. Councilmember Goodman?
The first question I have is, I mean, what level of detail and comments are you looking for? Are you looking for specifically what, you wanted to know if we were ready for administration to prepare the final? And when you say the final, are you wanting to know what changes we might be wanting? What, because that, in order for you to make changes, it kind of would need a thumbs-up, thumbs-down from council members, otherwise you're going to be making changes that you don't know how they likely would fare on Monday.
City Administrator?
That's correct, thank you. If council members have an additional change that they would like to discuss with other members in order then to provide clarity to staff as to what to prepare for the packet for July 15th, we'd love to hear that conversation. Otherwise, if there are no other suggested changes, we will put the finishing touches on this version and prepare it for the packet.
So if I, for example, was interested in saying that at this point I would be supportive of Southeast 43rd 2A, what information would you need from the council to know whether that? Sure. So on Southeast 43rd, I think at this point, and Beth, you can correct me if I'm wrong, we just need to understand, have we showed it correctly in this version, which does show it as utilizing existing debt service? That question, the 2B question, of whether or not we want to have a potential second revenue source, is one that we can decide subsequent to July 15th, but very soon thereafter. And it would come as part of that work session conversation about which projects we might want to refer to voters and what revenue source we would like to tie to. want to refer to voters and what revenue source we would like to tie to the TBD. Okay? So the current CIP shows Southeast 43rd. Just clarifying, make sure everybody understands, we go away tonight, including me, that if we make no changes to it, then it would be a do-it-now-out-of-existing-funds and not rely on TBD and not redirect any revenues from TBD, and it would just be done. That's the existing proposed? That is correct. Okay. Doesn't close the door still to that second conversation about, shall the council also pursue the possibility of utilizing TBD sales tax or some other revenue source to supplant the existing debt service?
Okay. Thank you. That's, I guess my feedback would be that's, unless I hear something extraordinarily different, that's what I would support. I'm concerned about. I would think we had confusing, contradicting, poor messaging for the last measure that we went through. And so I'm super, super concerned that we make that, potentially make that same, I'll call it a mistake again, even though I know we had over 50%. And we haven't heard, I'm trying to think of anybody who said, "No, don't do that project." We keep hearing consistently from different folks in the community, not just in Providence Point, "Just do it and do it now." I would be interested in having a conversation amongst ourselves about the City Hall and the $4 million. I'm still, I still don't understand what the $4 million is for, and maybe I just need to go back and watch the presentation that we had before from the consultant. So I'm still confused about that, just to be frank.
Councilmember Hunt. Actually, I'm sorry. Council Deputy President Bateese.
Thank you. So I understand what we'll have forward, come forward in the agenda bill, but in light of our conversation tonight about 2B or the hybrid, so is it my understanding, that would not be listed as an option? Because it seems like that that would be the opportunity to talk about both, but you're saying that would come in another step?
It would come in another step. That's correct.
Do you talk just a little bit more, if you don't mind, about why? Why we would not have that conversation at the same time?
Sure. So the CIP needs to set out which projects in particular are to be funded in 2020 so that we can move forward with preparing the annual operating budget. Annual operating budget includes assumptions about debt service payments. So we would reflect per councils' wish, it appears, to fund Southeast 43rd in 2020 using existing debt service revenue. That's how it would be shown in the CIP. So once we've established that and you've taken action on that, then we can come back and say, would you also like to pursue having the flexibility to utilize Transportation Benefit District, new revenue source in lieu of, if it passes, in lieu of existing debt service revenue?
Just wanting to better understand that. Thanks.
Also, Member Hunt.
So on the 2A and 2B, I'm leaning towards 2B because I think this fits into at least the criteria that I would use for projects that are suitable for TBD funding, including that it's an infrastructure improvement that would be beneficial to people in a larger catchment area than just in the city, because people use the roads outside of the city, and the sales tax is a funding mechanism that includes funding from people that use the roads and come into the city, but not only the residents. So for me, that funding mechanism makes sense, but I also understand the concern around messaging. And I think it would be helpful to understand from people that have that expertise, because I think it's an art to make sure that the question is asked in such a way that it's very clear to the voters what is actually being proposed. I think there's an art to that, and so it would be good to have some expertise in terms of the wording and the messaging and the implications on that. So I'm leaning towards 2B, but I would like to have more information about the messaging concern. And then also on the City Hall, it makes no sense to me to have the funding of the 4.3 million in 2021. So I think there's a few concerns. One is that we don't have savings in terms of the other, HVAC and the other improvements that need to be done, so it's not going to affect if we decide to go forward with design on the City Hall. It's not like we're having savings on the existing maintenance as far as what the memo has said. It also depends on, the timeline will depend on, for example, if we do design-build bid or design-build, and we have nowhere near enough information at this point to begin that conversation. And then I think my third biggest concern is that it seems to me to presuppose that the outcome of the outreach, which we haven't even yet started, will be that we're going to need to start a design in about a year from now. So I strongly feel that it sends the wrong message to have it $4.3 million in 2021.
Councilmember Goodman, your mic. Nope. Councilmember Ray.
I'm going to kind of amplify what Councilmember Hunt just said about the City Hall. I think it's premature, and what I would really like to see before we talk about design is not what people want in a City Hall, but I'd like to have a discussion around how people in this community would like to access city services. And if you look at the out-years for the City Hall, I mean, we're talking, construction would be 2026 or beyond. And so to me, it seems like putting the funding in 2021, when we could use those funds for other important projects, possibly fire station or something of that nature, seems a bit premature to me. A, we don't know exactly what we're looking to do, and B, even if we did design it in 2021, by the time we get around to construction in 2026 or beyond, that likely would be overtaken by events.
Councilmember Winterstein.
You know, I wasn't going to comment about the option 2A, 2B type thing until Councilmember Hunt did follow up your answer earlier. You said that's a question for later. And I just want to, for the record, to say I'm emphatically against 2B. I think we're having our, that's us wanting our cake and eat it too. It's specifically, if we're saying we want to use TBD funds because it collects money from a wider catchment to do a transportation project, well, that's option one. And we're saying we want this other option where we just fund it out of general funds. The idea that we could then say we're going to fund it out of general funds, but you know, if this other transportation money comes available, we'll shift some over there so we can do non-transportation funds, no way. I don't even want to go near that. We're either funding it completely out of general funds, and I know this is a question, and that's what's in, it's been clarified this evening, that's a question that's already been clarified, that's what's in the current proposal, and that's what we'll see on Monday. So I know it's a later question about 2A or 2B, but since it came up, I wanted, for the record, that idea of the hybrid is a non-starter to me.
Council Deputy President Bateese.
So just a couple of things after my question. Thanks for answering that. City Administrator Moon, in regard to the City Hall, I think a little bit of what we're hearing is that we aren't, I think, I don't think that we have all the information that we need to understand what that 4 million is focused on. And so it's seeming a little bit premature in terms of how far out that project is right now. So for me, I'd just like to hear more and understand better what is involved. The hybrid option that we've been talking about in regard to 2B is, I realize we're going to be talking about that later, and I think that we're hearing all the way around that we want to go forward with 2A, and that we'll have the option to talk about 2B. And tonight was the first time that we even had information on that. So I think that having more of an opportunity to discuss that and more information, if there is more information that comes forward, is something that I'm looking forward to. I am interested in learning more about 2B and the hybrid. Thank you.
Well, I'm sorry.
May I?
Yes.
We've had a few people raise a question about the funding shown in 2021 for consolidated City Hall. While that does not have any budgetary impacts, it doesn't have any impacts on how we go and produce the operating budget, which is our next task, I, there are two things that we could do. We could either take that input that you have given us tonight, and we could change how it is shown, or we can leave it as it is, and we can continue to talk about it as we go and gather that additional information that you're seeking, and have the community conversations. And it very well may be too early. I think our intent in showing it in this CIP is, in previous years, we haven't shown the City Hall project at all, or it's been entirely in the future years. And we felt it was very important to demonstrate to council and the community that we are going to need to make near-term progress on that community conversation in order to effectively plan what additional maintenance needs to happen and when in our existing facilities, and to begin possibly taking the steps toward community conversations and concept designs and actual construction of a new facility, if that's the community's desire. And so that is why we started to show it in particular years. We need to understand what target we are appointed at, and that's why we're showing it in, sooner in the CIP than we have previously.
Thank you. Councilmember Winterstein.
Yeah, I just want to follow up. I may remember this wrong, so I apologize if I heard this, if I remember this incorrectly. I thought it was commented that maybe those monies in this proposed CIP to spend on something like a design for a City Hall could be used for other purposes, but actually, they would become from the mitigation from, from the capital area, so they are restricted. We would, the funds that have been identified can only be used for capital facility projects. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Thanks. So first off, I'm glad that we're not having to decide between 2A and 2B this evening, because it sounds like we have a wide range of opinions up on the dais on the subject, but that we can decide to go in the general direction of 2 and leave the 2A or not 2B, that is the question, later. The question around the City Hall, so what I think I am hearing from this body is that, I'm going to suggest a path forward, and you can all tell me if you think it's reasonable or not. What I would suggest, because I know this is a topic that the administration has put a lot of time and effort into and is eager to have a fully-throated conversation with us about. What I would suggest is, what I think I'm hearing from the dais is that the default for next week would be to not include the 4.3 million, but I would suggest that what we do is direct the administration to come up with an alternate in addition to the main plan, and then speak to that alternate, understanding that the default position would be not include the 4.3, but give them the chance to sort of synthesize the information that they've heard this evening, and come back and talk to us about the possibility of that alternate version, rather than only preparing a version that does not have the 4.3. And so I ask my fellow council members if that, if they are okay with that as the plan going forward. And then after, if they are, then I will ask the administration if they are okay with that going forward. Council Deputy President Bateese.
I would agree with that plan. I think that just getting more information and having that alternate would be something I'd like to see.
Anybody else want to speak on this? Councilmember Winterstein.
I'm actually okay as it is proposed in the current CIP proposal for the work to be done in 2021 using the funds identified, for the reasons given earlier.
That'd be a no. Anyone else? Councilmember Hunt.
I think, for me, I have enough information about our lack of, lack of current information to make a decision that I feel like it's going to be in future years that we go forward or not with the City Hall. So I think it's premature to have that here. And again, like I said, I think it presupposes an outcome from an outreach where we haven't even reached out to people and talked about what is the problem that we're solving, and is there a problem that we're solving? So I am fine with having the alternate. I think for me, I have enough information to know that I think it belongs in future years.
So that's a yes to my suggestion on how to proceed. Councilmember Ray.
I think there's more complexity to moving it around than just, I'm going to move this number from this column to that column. And my feeling is, if the administration comes forward with this in or out of the CIP, that's fine. And I think we're in a position, whereas the council, we can amend the CIP to either amend it out, amend it to an out-year, or to leave it be. And, you know, let's just put that, you know, let's do that process formally, because otherwise, you know, with your recommendation, we're going to have to make a motion to take the alternative proposal or the given proposal. So it's really the same thing. It's just whether we do it by amendment or we have a whole separate alternative package. That was a no.
I got that. Councilmember Goodman.
So it's 4.3 million in 2021, but that's not an appropriation. So that's just a, it's a plan. The council still has to take a step sometime in late 2020 to decide what, if any, money we're going to appropriate towards that 4.3 million. So I think my answer is a no.
All right. Well, then, I think in the absence of anything else, we'll leave it the way that it is and move it forward next week. Is there anything else the administration is looking for out of this conversation before we move on to the next item? Councilmember Hunt.
I have one more. So one more thing on the Creekside acquisition, on the acquisitions in general. I think, so I appreciate that in 2020 and 2021, those are not the ones that are affected, but then it seems, it seems like a very focused removal of funding for the out-years specifically to acquisitions. And so I understand that they aren't legally required in the other, the other conditions that the Finance Department used for criteria, but at the same time, I think there are many other, many other projects in the out-years. So I was looking at Central Park Pad Number 3, for example. So that's a turf pad that in 2022 has general funds at 400,000 and mitigation parks 500,000, and then some grant money as well. And so it seems that there are many other things like that that also are not legally required and are not required for safety, et cetera, but they're also important. So I would, I would be very interested to have a, a plan that would spread out that, basically spread out that removal of funding in the out-years to other projects, because it seems like it's a very targeted removal of funding specific to acquisitions, and then also the Three Trails, whereas I'm still not sure why some other projects, it couldn't be spread out more.
So can I speak to the Central Park Pad work? That one was discussed, and the difference with that one is that if that turf is not replaced, then that, that project, it's an existing facility, so that becomes unusable. So again, the criteria was, is it a capital investment that is supporting the continued use of an existing facility? So just to address that one in particular.
All right. Any other discussion on this item before we move on? Anything else the administration is looking for from us?
No, I think there are no further comments or desire to make a
No, I think there are no further comments or a desire to make a seeming majority who want to make any other changes. I think we have the direction we need to prepare the final version, the final draft of the CIP for your consideration. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you and thanks staff for preparing us for this multifaceted conversation this evening. With that, we're going to move on to ID 0383, mitigation and impact fees, transportation, fire, police, bike pad, and general government buildings, presented by a retinue of people, Trish Heinonen, Policy Planning Manager, Doug Gabbard, and Luke Slatterbeck, consultants.
I will wait till they come all back.
I'm going to call a five-minute bio break.
Sure.
So we will be back. It is 8:02, and we will be back at 8:07. We are back and ready to proceed with Trish Heinonen, ID 03.
Okay. Tonight, we're here to talk about impact and mitigation fee updates that we've been working on since last year. The only one you will not be seeing tonight is the park impact fee, and that should be coming to you in November. And with that, I will turn it over to Doug and Luke, who have been doing incredible amount of work on all of the fees to bring them all to you tonight. And be ready with your questions because they're here to walk you through all of them. And with that, I will turn it over to Doug and Luke.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Doug Gabbard with FCS Group. I am joined by Senior Analyst Luke Slatterbeck, who is the brains behind this observation. We have a ton of information to share with you, and we are very excited about sharing it. We're going to first start with some legal context for impact fees and mitigation fees, but mostly about impact fees, and I'll explain why. We're then going to go over the five fees and the results that we obtained in our analysis. We're going to be flying over this in the presentation at about 30,000 feet. You have calculation details in your reports, and we are more than happy to dive into the weeds at any point. So the level I approach this at does not preclude you in any way from talking about any questions that are on your mind. So what is an impact fee? Well, an impact fee is a one-time fee paid by new development. They are not ongoing rates. They're not a utility rate. It's a one-time fee when you develop a property. The fee is defined in Washington statute, but if you look at the statutes of other states, you will find very similar definitions in all states with impact fees. And the reason why is that impact fees are really a creature of the U.S. Constitution and the Fifth Amendment. And so while we have an important statute that we have to adhere to, there are other legal constraints at work that we have to make sure that we are within the bounds of in order to have a valid fee. This comes in handy, especially when we're talking about mitigation fees, but I won't get ahead of myself. So let's take a walk down the statute. We're in Chapter 8202 of the RCW, and we're just going to hit a few highlights. All of these things that I'm going to talk about are part of the impact fee statute. So for example, one of the points that you will find in statute is that you have to achieve a balance between impact fees and other source of funding for infrastructure, even if projects, your whole project list is completely eligible and does nothing but create new capacity and is otherwise eligible for impact fees. You can't rely solely on impact fees in order to pay for your infrastructure. System improvements must be reasonably related to the new development on a system-wide basis. They cannot exceed a proportionate share of system improvement costs. This is one of those constitutional issues that came in after a very important case in Oregon. And system improvements must reasonably benefit new developments. That doesn't mean that every individual improvement benefits every individual development. These are looked at on a system-wide basis. If you tell a developer that they have to build something, you have to give them credit for it. That's what 060 is all about. And also in 070, we learned that we have to have these impact fee revenues earmarked in certain interest-bearing accounts. You can only spend them in conformance with the capital facilities element of your comprehensive plan, and you have a time limit for spending them. What would be logical for me to talk about next is all that same legal context for mitigation fees. But if I went over all the statutory information on mitigation fees, it would not fill a single slide because there is much less given to us on mitigation fees in statute. You are allowed to mitigate for all kinds of things with one important rule. You can only apply mitigation fees to properties, to developments that go through the SEPA process because it is charged through the authority of SEPA. And so if a development does not go through that process, don't be charging mitigation fees. Other than that, there's not a whole lot of statutory guidance on how to charge them, how to calculate them, but all of the constitutional issues like proportionate share and essential nexus and all those buzzwords, all of those still apply. And so for that reason, what you will see, especially if you look into the reports that we sent you, is all of our mitigation fees are really calculated to the same standards of rigor as the impact fees. And so you have some assurance that they pass constitutional muster, in addition to the statutory muster of which there is not much. So with that, unless there are, I don't know how you want to do questions, but the next step is to get into the actual numbers. And for that, I'm going to have Luke go first.
All right. Thank you, Doug. So just to be clear, the first two that we'll be talking about are mitigation fees, not impact fees. I'm going to start with police. This fee was last updated in 2008. To as great an extent as possible, throughout this process, we've tried to follow the same methodology from previous studies. We have had to make a couple adjustments for fire, which we'll talk about in a minute, but for police, it's the exact same. And the key driver here is that there is less outstanding debt associated with police now than there was when the fees were last calculated, and debt is taken out as a net liability against the police department's assets, which results in a higher fee this time. One other thing to note is that these fees are all calculated and assessed based on land use. So we'll have single-family residential, multifamily, retail, office buildings, et cetera. And when we did the study this time, there were a higher percentage of calls for service that went towards residential areas, which means that it's residences that are picking up more of the increase in the fee.
Councilmember Goodman?
Thanks. You just mentioned that there was the debt. Was that for the?
I believe it was for the City Hall across the street.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Hunt?
This was last updated in 2008, and I'm wondering ideally what the schedule for updating these fees would be.
So generally speaking, we would like to update it on a more frequent basis, generally somewhere in the range of five to seven years, especially with police, because it's not an impact fee, it's a mitigation fee. There's not a legal requirement as to how long you have to go between them, but there are a couple things to be aware of. Generally speaking, especially in a growing city, the longer you wait, the less, the more you're going to lose out on, because generally the fees will go up over time. And of course, the longer it's been since the previous study was completed, the more open you're leaving yourself to a legal challenge.
And are there any advantages to waiting? I mean, it seems there are multiple reasons to do it as frequently as you can.
Not any particular advantages, other than it's a lot of work. So for police, as you can see, we have the existing fees from 2008 in the center column, and then the proposed fees. As you can see, these are not enormous dollar amounts compared to some of the other fees that we'll be talking about. We're talking in the range of a couple hundred dollars per home. So as you can see, existing, 150 for a single-family home, gone up to 250. Multifamily, gone up by about $95. And then for office buildings, for retail, it's pretty much staying flat, and the reason for that is because there's a higher percentage of calls for service to residential areas.
Councilmember Hunt?
On the office building, there's a 1% increase. So does that mean there's less than a penny?
It's an Excel. Yeah, yes.
So there is a slight increase, but it's less than one penny, so it's not showing up.
Yeah, that's correct. So next, we're going to talk about the general government buildings mitigation fee. This was also last updated in 2008. It's part of the same process. We are using the same methodology as the previous study, and the fees are decreasing due to a change in the level of service over time. And what that really means is that the general government facilities have not expanded or grown at anywhere near the same rate as the city itself has grown over that same timeframe. So the value of general government buildings per unit of development has decreased over that timeframe. And here, we're going to look at two different alternatives with the potential new municipal facility and without it, to kind of give you a comparison for what impact that could have. So as you can see, we have single-family, multifamily, and office building, which we're using as a representative sample for commercial and non-residential land uses. So as you can see, across all land use categories, the fee is decreasing, as I mentioned, due to the decrease in the value of facilities per unit of development. So if the new municipal facility was adopted and included, we'd be looking at about a 15% decrease for single-family, so about $250. Without it, then we would be looking at a 38% decrease, that'd be about $640. And the key here is that what we have to look at is, once we take into account all of our assumptions about growth, what new projects are coming down the line, how much money are we going to collect and what are we going to spend it on? As Doug alluded to, there are time limits regarding how often or how quickly the money can be expended. So if it's not expended within a certain period of time, 10 years, then it has to be refunded to the developers that originally paid it. So without the new municipal facility, we would be over-collecting by about $1.5 million over the timeframe. So we've adjusted the fees down to account for that.
Councilmember Ray?
So what assumption did you use, then, on what a new City Hall facility would cost?
So we were provided an excerpt of the draft CIP. So we were provided an excerpt of the draft CIP. Do we have that anywhere? It was provided by staff. I don't have the exact dollar amount.
Is that the number in our 26 and beyond, or 2026 and beyond number?
That's correct. It's the same number in the CIP.
And just as a clarification on that, if that were adopted, the mitigation fee would only be a portion of that funding mechanism. That $300, $400 difference is not sufficient to account for the 35, 40 million.
Council President, I might also add that in the CIP, it shows use of previously collected mitigation fees, which council has commented on. And as Luke and Doug have alluded to, those have time limits for expenditures as well.
Yes, I am still confused about why all of the rates go down, even in the event of having a new city hall, which will be very expensive. I know you've talked about it, but I'm still, the magnitude, it seems.
Yeah, so that's perfectly understandable. So the mitigation fee can only be assessed as a proportionate share, as Doug has alluded to. So the maximum fee, regardless of whether a new municipal facility gets built or not, is the equivalent of the total value of current existing assets divided by the total amount of development. So if, for example, we were to charge more than $14.35 for a single-family home, that would be overcharging new growth, which wouldn't be proportionate.
City Administrator Moon.
Thank you. I might also add, it's a product of what we are showing in our capital plan. So in previous decade, for example, we may have had more general government capital facility investments occurring than what we are showing for this most recently passed adopted CIP and this one that you are considering now. And so that's how some of it comes out in the wash.
And one other question, the, this ratio of government facilities to citywide development level of service has declined statement, is that a general trend, like statewide, or is it specific to our situation? And also, is level of service in this case specific to our, our city? Or is that a more generic statement across?
So as to level of service, it's specific to Issaquah, specifically what the level of service was back in 2008, when the previous study was calculated. In terms of, as a general trend, it really is one of those where it's, it's unique to every community, to every situation. There's not really a general trend.
Thank you.
So now we're going to move on to the, to the fire and EMS impact fee. This was last updated in 2006, so it has been 13 years. And it results in a pretty substantial fee increase. There's a couple reasons for that. One is the projected cost of renovating Station 71 and expanding its capacity to meet the increased demand from growth. And we have also, after consulting with the city attorney, included remaining eligible Station 72 debt in the cost basis. This is a station that has previously been constructed to serve new growth, I believe in the Highlands area. There is still some debt remaining on that station, and we have, as I said, after consulting with city attorney, we've adopted, are proposing to adopt it into the CFP so that we could use existing fund balance to pay, pay the debt. And one thing I would just like to point out is that the 13-year gap between studies has likely led the city to under, under-recover potential fee revenue, as you'll see.
Councilmember Hunt.
What is the ideal time between updating this one?
This would generally be five to seven years. Once again, the time limit on expenditures is 10, so.
Can I jump in?
Yeah.
Would, just slide over. Just as an additional comment to that question, because that has now come up a couple times, one way to mitigate revenue loss between updates is to index your impact and mitigation fees. And I think at least in the transportation report, you'll see some suggestions about that. But it is very common to, to index to like the ENR cost, construction cost index each year. You could make it administrative and, and just let it happen automatically. That is a way to mitigate price risk. It's, it's, it's for price risk, not for increasing revenue, because sometimes cost indexes go down, and you should still update it that way. But that is one way to mitigate the risk.
Councilmember Ray.
I think this is a nit, but I just want to understand. So you mentioned fire Station 72 in the Highlands in the same sentence?
Oh.
Or Station 72 is not in the Highlands?
Yes, that, that is what Keith appears to be front.
Gesturing at you.
Behind you.
Behind my back? Okay.
Yeah, my apologies.
Okay. I was just, that's what I thought, but I just wanted to clarify that. Thanks.
So as you'll see, the existing fee for a single-family home is about $620. We're proposing a fee of $2,200. That's a 256% increase. And as I said, the rate increase, or the increase is driven by a couple things. The time length between studies and the new station that we're showing high cost for. With that, I'm going to hand it over to Doug.
All right. So let's talk about the.
No, no, sorry, sorry.
Can I just ask one more?
Councilmember Hunt.
So you, you mentioned the indexing. It seems like, especially on that one, because it was a long time between, and there's some quite substantial increase in the percentage of the rate. I wonder, but it, it doesn't seem that the recommendation is to do that indexing. So I'm wondering if we can consider doing that indexing on that rate.
You, you can index all of these fees.
Let me quick jump in.
Oh, please.
We index them now. We've been doing that since, I believe since 2015, when we did the transportation and park fees. Most recently in those, we also added a three-year requirement to update them in the actual ordinance that adopted them. So, so those few have a three-year cycle, and we're recommending either to do all of them at a three-year cycle, or do some of them five, you know, just so that we're not always bringing them all to you at the same time. But we have been indexing them for a while. It just usually gives them a very small increase, though, every January, not.
Just to clarify, but not that, not that one in particular.
Yes, we've been doing.
It's been being indexed?
Right. Right. But again, it's only a percentage. It's a very small percentage, not like 15% or 18, you know, it's, they're always very small annually.
Okay. So in addition to indexing, you would still need to probably follow the ideal rate of every.
Correct.
Thank you.
So let's talk about the transportation-related fees. The traffic impact fee, last updated in 2015. Really, there's nothing, there's nothing new here. The, the increase that we see is really inflationary in nature. If you take the proposed fee and the fee that was adopted in 2015, and you go up 3% per year, that's the compound average growth rate, you would get to the fee that we're recommending today for single-family residences. Also, because your previous methodology used person trip data, which, which is kind of cool that you were doing it then, we're a lot smarter about person trips now. So this is the number that goes into the denominator that everything gets divided by. We're a lot smarter on what those trips are by individual land use, because only recently has data been developed for that by the Institute of Transportation Engineers. And so we're giving you the best, most recent data for that, but it may look different than data that you have had before. So for the traffic impact fee, your existing, your single-family fee will go up to $9,173 or about 16%. The multifamily fee actually goes down a little bit to $47,192. And for office building, you're looking at something in the middle, increasing to $11.38, about an 8% increase. The overall level of change, which is basically going up a little bit, is due to kind of the inflationary nature of slightly smaller, if we go back to here, no, slightly smaller project list and even smaller expected growth, and that accounts for the overall level. And then differences between the individual land uses is really attributable to using the best, most recent data on person trips by land use. And just, just to reinforce, we're showing you three land uses here, but in the report, you'll find the whole fee schedule, including some fun ones, because we have information on all those now. So now, we can't say the same thing about bicycle and pedestrian mitigation fee. It's a little more than just inflationary. That was also updated in 2015. Eligible costs have risen by 40%, but expected growth declined by 22%. Individually, those, those percentages don't really mean anything, but what you can see with one going way up and one coming down, you can see a real strategic shift where bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure has become much more of a priority for the city. And so for that reason, the, if you annualize the increase of the bike-ped fee, that no longer looks inflationary, like the traffic fee. Now we're going up about 15% per year to get you from 2015 to today. And, but the, the issue of the person trips still applies. So land use by land use, you will still have differences. So let's look at what those numbers are. For single-family, we're going up about 78% to $1,357.12 for that land use. Multifamily, as before, is a bit smaller change. It's not going down this time, it's just going up much less, 51% to $698.29 per dwelling unit. And then office buildings, up 67% to $1.68 per square foot. Clear, clear emphasis on bike-ped infrastructure being shown in these numbers here. And details on all these can be found in the report on the transportation and bike-ped impact fees. So we're ready to have Luke take us home with some summaries. Do we have questions?
I do. Chris, I have a question for you. Back in 2000, actually, it spanned 2014, and then we finished the work up in 2015 when we did, when we did concurrency, we updated our impact fees for transportation and bike and ped. At that time, we implemented a whole new approach. I think Randy Young was our consultant, and we called it simplified concurrency. And that model drove the calculation, if I, if I remember correctly, how we calculated our impact fees at that time. Sound familiar?
Exactly, yes.
How similar or different was the procedure used this time for the calculation of, of these new fees?
We did get new information from Torsten on the projects and the concurrency piece of it, and worked with Sheldon on the actual project list that wanted to be, that wanted to be included for the fees. So I'd say it's similar, that we worked with the same people and to get the same outcome, but since the concurrency back in 2014 was a whole new ballgame, I think we knew a lot more this time than we did back then. And so we anticipated the projects that would be going in, not only with road projects, but with bike-ped this time.
So your input, you felt you had better grasp of the projects, I think I heard you just say.
Right, right.
It was the method by which these were, I mean, there was some really good explanatory information on how we did that, because there, how that information was used. About the projects, about the number of trip generations, their origins, them, and then how then that was proportionately, that the portion of those projects that were, would bear growth was, there was a calculation that we went, we called this, anyway, we called that simplified concurrency. I just don't see that same methodology explained in the material that we have, and are you?
Right. And most of it in the, in the report are mainly the projects, the projects that were included to get to the impact fee. The concurrency piece is more, what you're describing is more the, the transportation piece, the concurrency piece.
Well, that was, that drove the, our impact fee calculation.
Right. And so we got updated numbers from Torsten, because he just shared all those with you all earlier, I guess later last year. And so he gave us all those numbers and projects as well for the impact fee calculations.
And so you calculated the same method?
Pretty much, other than the trip, people trip from the IT manual is a little different than it was back in 2015.
Okay, so that's a refined coefficient or something.
Yes, a refined coefficient, yes.
It's an updated one. It's, but it's the same methodology.
Correct.
Because I, I found that, it was very informative, very helpful. I think it was very helpful for me to be on the council at the time and have that explained. And we're not really getting that. I don't know if there's any, because this is a, these are especially for transportation, you know, it's very, it's very clear that the people of Issaquah want to make sure that the impact to our infrastructure by growth is, is fairly, you know, paid for by, by that growth. And, and kind of a little bit more of showing of the work that indeed that we're there. Another big phrase that I think we put an emphasis in the policy and the way we chose the impact fees last time was that we, we went up to what we were allowed to do by law. We went to the threshold, like this is the maximum, based upon this justification and the, the way we did this calculation, this is the maximum that we could charge.
Right.
And I, and I think kind of showing that work, maybe it's here and I'm just not seeing it, but I think that would be very helpful to, to have that information as well.
Right. And I think to the other pieces, that in 2015, we were actually changing concurrency. And so there was a body of work going to you all about changing concurrency, and we're not changing concurrency this time. We just updated it, nothing changed. And so the projects came into the calculations, and then you have your report. So this, the difference in this one is we didn't change concurrency this time.
So would you agree then with the, that these proposed new levels do what we did last time as well, is that we would be really setting these at the maximum allowed by law?
Yes.
Across all of them?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Ray.
So I'm trying to understand the bicycle pedestrian numbers. So the 40% increase, do I take that to mean we have had an increase in our bicycle pedestrian infrastructure of 40%? Is that, is that a correct assumption?
No, that's, that's an increase in the size of the project list. And, and even more specifically than that, an increase in the total of eligible project costs.
Okay. And then the 22%, I'm not even going to guess anymore, I'm just going to ask you.
Sorry.
The 20, no, that's good. The 22% decrease in, in growth, what does that mean?
It, it just means that the, the planning horizon in terms, not of time, but of number of trip ends, is slightly smaller. So, so you have a, a much larger dollar value being spread over a slightly smaller number of trips, which makes the fee go, go way up.
So if I, can I, again, tell me when I'm, that I'm wrong again, I'm okay with that. So we're, we're, we're increasing our investments in bicycle ped activities, infrastructure by 40% over the period we're looking at. And in that same period, the number of people trips, expected growth is down by 20%.
It's, it's clear that, that the, the infrastructure pie is giving a larger slice to bike-ped, that that is an increasingly important part of your, your transportation infrastructure portfolio.
Okay.
Councilmember Goodman. Thank you. So the expected growth dominator is down 22%, which was the same we saw in our previous, I think.
That's right.
Growth being down is growth being down. Growth being down is growth being down. That is not, that is forward-looking.
As it was back then.
Right, just making sure, because it's, the first thing I thought of, which would be wrong, is that, well, we had a moratorium.
Oh, oh, yeah.
This is all forward-looking, okay.
That's absolutely correct. A point in time, long time ago, point in time now.
Counselmember Winterstein.
Well, yeah, and I appreciate that, that it's growth in trips that either begin or end, or both, within the city.
Yes.
That's all that that's talking about.
Yes.
It's not necessarily growth in population or growth in jobs, it's trips, whether they be motorized or not, or in this case, something bike or ped-related. So, could you just explain that part, that's down 22% over the last update's forecast of the number of trips ends that would begin, that were in, beginning or ending in the city?
Sure. And, and notice how I didn't mention anything in terms of windows of time, you know, I didn't, I didn't tell you whether the, I didn't say anything about whether the previous trip count was for 10 years or 10 minutes.
I can't let them hear me. So, so I, and I purposely did it that way, because I didn't, I didn't want to, it's only so fruitful to invite comparisons to a previous methodology. So, really, the point of this is to say that on a, on a per-trip basis, there is a much greater emphasis now on bike-ped infrastructure than there was before. And I'm not, I don't, the data don't support too much stronger of a statement than that. Does that make sense?
As reflected in our TIP.
Sure, I'll, I'll go with you there, yeah.
That was a question.
Yeah. Yeah, that's fair.
You say there's more of an emphasis. So, you look at the body of projects, their overall cost, the, the portion of those that can be attributed to growth.
Yes.
There's a greater percentage in bike-ped than there wa, than there is as a percentage to overall motorized.
Exactly right.
And the number of trips that begin or end within the city has, is, is lower than previously. That's the part where you lost me, you're saying, it's not really saying that.
So, so the, and, and remember I said before that either one of these two numbers don't mean anything in isolation, they just, they, they mean something.
I didn't quite understand it.
Because when I say that, that the number of trips, what did I say, the number of trips went down 22%, well, you, we have a certain list now that, that will ultimately cover a certain period of time, and your previous list covered a certain period of time. We have no idea, I'm, I'm making no statement about whether those time periods are comparable. So, so I'm, I am not making any assertion that Issaquah is growing faster or slower than it did before. I'm just saying that the previous project list was matched to a, a different set of growth assumptions than the current project list.
Okay, there are different growth assumptions. I'd be curious to hear what those are.
Well, and that's the information we got from Torsten. So, that's, that's the denominator. You will find that information in Section 3 of the report.
Do you know what page that is in our packet?
You know what, I think I can do even better than that, and I might be able to put it on the.
Member reports.
This? On the Chrome button, I'm sorry. Traffic, boom! Hey, we are cooking with gas here. All right, here we are. So, Section 3, Page 4. And so, Section 3B is where we discuss that, that current, and 3C is future demand. And so, these are the assumptions that went into the current study.
Everyone's reading the report, that's so cool.
Paul, did you have a further question?
But you, you will not find any assertions about the, the previous methodology in that area.
And, and, okay, I'm looking for, I guess I, maybe I'm remembering incorrectly, but I do recall, rather than just getting a number and saying, oh, by the way, here it is, here's my forecast, and by the way, I'm gonna crunch numbers downstream from there, I do remember being educated more on even how perhaps these numbers were arrived at. And yes, it was the same time we were doing concurrency, and that was what was real, that was important. I tried to not use the word concurrent, concurrency. And, and maybe I'm kind of crossing those wires a little bit, but it was, I know as a policymaker, and I sat here, and I recognized, what are we gonna say the impact fees are? What does it say about our policy for concurrency, what we want to do with our infrastructure, how we want to charge growth for their impact of that infrastructure? It was very clear. And, and that's, I just think that was a benefit to me as a policymaker when we did it in 2015.
Other questions right now? Counsel, Counselmember Goodman.
No, I was, I was only gonna say that I wondered if Section 5, if Section 6 calculated fees has some of the information in it that Paul might be looking for now.
Thank you. Other questions right now?
Take it off. All right, so here we have a summary of the fees, summary of the fees by single-family across all, all five of the existing and proposed fees. As you can see, there's about a $3,300 difference total for the cost of a single-family home versus the previous, previous collection of studies. Here we have the same information for multifamily. As you can see, the increase is about $1,900. And finally, for office buildings, as you can see, the increase is about $1.13 per square And then, we did just want to put in some information here regarding housing affordability. And impact or mitigation fees are a pretty important piece of funding capital infrastructure for municipalities. And they do increase the cost of providing new housing, new development, but something that's important to keep in mind is that these overall increases of about $3,300, about $1,900 per multifamily unit are relatively small compared to the total cost of constructing those residential units. Any further questions? Nope. Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Fish?
They ended so fast. Where are the questions? So, this will be coming back to you all at a Services meeting in August. I'm looking at my packet to see when the date, I think it's August 13th. Those of you on Services will be able to have another round of questions on, on all this good stuff, yes, the 13th. And then, we're hoping for action September 16th, if, if possible. But that would be the next steps for you all. And again, parks will be coming to you at a work session in November, so stay tuned for that. Are there questions on the schedule or anything else?
Closing questions or comments? Do we have any members of the public that wish to speak to this issue this evening? Do we have any members of the public? Do we have any members of the public? No, anything else, City Administrator Moon? With that, we are adjourned. Thank you, and thank you at home.
Could, could I, could I add just one quick thing?
No.
Okay, that's fair. I took no for an answer.
No, I'm sorry, we're adjourned.
That's fair.
Okay.